Good evening, everyone. Call the meeting over. Please stand and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Reitzel.
Present.
Alderman Logan.
Present.
Alderman Snow.
Present.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Present.
Alderman Shuneman.
Present.
Alderman Kluckler.
Present.
Alderman Folsom. Alderman Watts.
Present.
Seven present, you have a quorum.
Alderman Folsom contacted me early this afternoon. His mistress has been in the hospital most of the week and got discharged today, so she can't be left alone, so he's going to stay home with her this evening. So, Mr. Logan, it's nice to see you back here as well.
Thank you, Mayor. It's good to be back.
First order of business, audience request, is there anyone from the audience that would like to address the council this evening? If so, please step forward. Not yet. Okay, moving on. RFCDC, they're not here, but Ms. Bland is. Bethany, please.
Thank you. Glenn, hand him the paper. He's doing me a great favor, and that is that we're celebrating our 60th anniversary this year as a chamber here in Rock Falls, and so we're pretty excited about that. We have our annual meeting dinner coming up on February 25th. One of the things I'll share with you guys, some of you have been around for a while, if you have any photos or stories or things like that you'd like to share about the chamber, we're really focusing on our members and our community at this event, so anything that you can share, we would like to share that to the whole community and then, of course, that evening as well. So, that is coming up. Glenn did a wonderful job. He was checking over our list of original members, so thank you.
George.
And George, thank you. Just a couple of things, I know some of you got paper here with your information. This is some of the things that the chamber's been working on in the last year and this year. It really reflects what we do for our members and community, so that's just for you to read whenever you have a chance. We have a couple of events coming up. One of them's our quarterly members' meeting. That's March 23rd, and this is going to be focusing on social media. So, yes, this is a quarterly members' meeting, but the entire community is welcome. It's an opportunity for local businesses and nonprofits to learn more about social media, which would be Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, Pinterest, things like that. We're utilizing local business owners who are successful at that to teach others how to do this, so we're pretty excited about that. And then, we also have our spring bingo, which is, for those of you who are familiar with the holiday bingo, it's similar to that. We just focus on a different topic. It's spring, so we're doing summer and fun things. We actually filled up the entire American Legion with the holiday bingo. It was a huge event. The purpose of this event, it does help raise some funds for the chamber, but it really focuses on the local businesses that we have here. Everything that we put in the prizes comes from local businesses. So, they're really excited. People get excited to win their prizes, and we had over 600 people at the Legion the last time, so it's a big event for us. Another thing that I just want to kind of throw out in the future, sometime in March, we'd love to have you all come and meet with our board again and share some things that we're working on, hear some updates from the city. We can set a date, we can work with the mayor to kind of figure out what would be best for all of you. And a thank you to Tourism and George Logan. They met with us recently to give some information about the catfish tournament and then Summer Splash, so we worked out some details on that, and we're excited about that coming up in June as well. So, thank you. Anyone have any questions for me? I went through a lot really fast.
You are a patch talker.
I am.
Thank you, Bethany, very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Would ask anybody, any members of the council, do they have anything they want pulled for any purpose before the consent agenda is read? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk.
First item is to approve the minutes of the January 5th, 2016 regular council meeting. Second item is to approval of the bills as presented. And the last item, the amount will be changed to $1,050. Renewal of the IDNR license number 3090 for the operation and maintenance of a stormwater or storm sewer pipe along the Hennepin Canal. Five-year agreement for $1,050.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Watts, would that motion include changing the 1,100 to 1,050?
Yes, it would.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Logan? Motion by Mr. Watts, seconded by Mr. Logan to approve the consent agenda as presented with the noted change in item number three. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman.
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler.
Yes.
Alderman Watts?
Yes.
Seven aye.
Thank you. City Administrator, Robert, please.
Your Honor, I'd like to begin tonight by receiving approval on the agreement with Terricon for a Phase II environmental study on the proposed property that we are buying from Wayne Schmidt. That Phase II from Terricon, their estimate of the work is $10,800.
I move for the approval.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Kuhlmeier, seconded by Mr. Snow for the approval of the agreement with Terricon for Phase II environmental study on the Schmidt property in an amount not to exceed $10,800.
Your Honor, I'd just like to add that this is part of the due diligence that the city does in acquiring a piece of property.
And was recommended by Rick Palmer after he reviewed the Phase I report, too.
Any questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman.
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler.
Yes.
Alderman Watts?
Yes.
Seven aye.
Your Honor, item number two is seeking approval of resolution 2016-730 authorizing the amendment to the contract for purchase of land from George and Janet Hallman. The basic amendment to the contract is the extension of time for closing, extending this out to March 31st of 2016.
Move for the approval of resolution 2016-730.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kuhlmeier, seconded by Mr. Logan for approval of resolution 2016-730 authorizing amendment to contract for the purchase of land of George and Janet Hallman. And as Robin alluded to, the only change in the original contract is for the extension of time for the closure, which now will be March 31st of 2016.
Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman.
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler.
Yes.
Alderman Watts?
Yes.
Seven aye.
Your Honor, number three on the, under me, is the approval of the amended agreement and all addition, additional documentation with the Rock Falls Hotel Group. I guess I'd like to turn it over to Attorney Reeves for any comments that he may have at this time before we turn it over to our guests from the hotel.
Your Honor, the only thing I have to say is I've gone through these, and I think we've got all the documentation required, except that the sources and uses, Neil, that is on the documents that were handed to me or that were included in the city's packet, is the sources and uses that were applicable for the new market tax credit financing. And I thought that John had sent me a couple of months ago a new sources and uses statement that reflected the construction costs and the increase in the construction costs and so on. Unfortunately, I don't have my file with me tonight. I looked a little bit before I came over, but didn't find that particular thing. Would you be able to check with John and have him send that through to us again, please?
There's a revision. You got it right on the head, the revision reflecting the new costs, and that, that was where the communication had gotten, that was used for the new market tax credit because they were demanding to see the new sources and uses. So, that is the same sources and uses, but it's a revision of their original use for the new market tax credit.
This one, though, has, most of the stuff on here, though, has to do with the costs associated with the new market tax credits and not with the actual construction. There's my point.
But under the, under the sources, the really only difference was there was going to be contingency money used towards construction. Does that show that on there, or he may have sent you the wrong file?
No, this is the, this is the same sheet that had been provided by the name of your financial consultant on the new market tax credit.
What did Kevin send you, Robin? Do you have?
I can.
Was it Kevin or John? Maybe, maybe it was.
I know it was forwarded, I think, one of the two on last Friday.
It was. Unfortunately, I just had a email problem.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't get it last Friday.
If you don't have it tomorrow, let me know. We can, we can.
Yeah. Aside from that, I mean, I've seen it, and if you've got a revision now based upon the fact that you now have a construction manager there that has to be accounted for with regard to uses, that's going to change. Everything else, I think, is fine. It can be approved subject to that receipt of that final.
Okay. We can do it.
Sources and uses.
What does this mean to the city, all these documents?
Well, what happened, the, the basic thing to the city, what it means, is that the, because of the fact that the original contractor ceased business and they were left without a contractor to complete the project, it required an extension of time to meet the various guidelines or the various time periods that were in the original redevelopment agreement. And so, the city is agreeing to amend that redevelopment agreement by extending the time periods by which certain events have to be done and by which the completion date is to be concluded. And that's basically all it does. The documents between the contractor and the developers is aside from that because the city's not really a part of that. That's between Rock Falls Hotel Group and the Havard Development, basically. But to get to that point requires that there be an amendment to the redevelopment agreement that the city is a party to, to extend the time for completion to cover the fact that the original contractor went out of business.
And this was what we had brought up a month or so ago?
Yes. And we were waiting for these other documentation things, and they've now been completed. So, one of the things that we'd been waiting for was we had to have the new construction superintendent, general contractor, whatever he was called, had to sign on to the escrow agreement with the title company for dispersments, because there has to be somebody who approves those dispersments and who provides the information that the title company needs before it can make a dispersment. And we've got that signature now, so we're, everything's in place at this, with the minor exception of this, and I've gotten it, I've had it, but if there has to be another revision, just have Kevin send it through so we can conclude that.
I just forwarded it to you, the one that we received Friday afternoon.
Okay, fine.
And I apologize, I, it was sent, it was just a re-mail problems that day.
Well, I, yeah. I've had a lot of those.
Neil, would you like to say anything before we call for a vote or anything?
Yeah, I can give you just a brief update. I don't go through all the minor details, but start from the top down. Third floor, all of the guest room bathrooms and entryway are all tiled and grouted. The wall vinyl was delivered today, so we'll be starting that. As soon as that's done, they'll go in and put the cove base back up in the guest rooms and, and then we'll be basically ready for carpet up there in probably about a month. The second floor, jip crease all done, so that's cured out. So, they'll start tile down there next Monday, and then the drywall, or the wall vinyl guys will just drop down from third to second. First floor, pool area from, you went in the building, basically everything to your right of the lobby is all drywalled, so the pool is drywalled, guest laundry, fitness, all those 10 guest rooms. Monday, they'll be insulating the rest of the building, and about, what'd you say, 10, 3/4 of the lobby is drywalled now, the ceiling, the soffits are in, so you really can start to see with all the interior walls in place and drywalled, kind of the finished product. All the storefront windows along the back patio are in now, facing the river, all the windows in the pool, so you can see those, they go from floor to ceiling. All the front windows are put in, the doors are put in this morning. So, it's really, really starting to take shape. So, PTACs are all installed on the third floor, will be installed on the second floor the rest of this week, so it's, it's coming along.
Mr. Kuhlmeier.
Yes, I wanted to thank your group for the accommodation and courtesy you showed in allowing us to inspect the hotel when we were over there the last time, because it really gave me a good feel for what you were telling us tonight and the updates that you've made. And you're following through on your update that you promised. Alderman Shuneman.
Mr. Shuneman, do you have any questions you'd like to ask?
No, it looks very nice, Neil.
Anybody else? Well, hearing then, the chair would call for a motion for the approval of the amended agreement and all additional documents with the Rock Falls Hotel Group.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Snow.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Shuneman. Okay. Gentlemen, you know your positions. Thank you. Go ahead.
Alderman Reitzel.
Recuse, please.
Alderman Logan.
Recuse.
Alderman Snow.
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman.
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler.
Yes.
Alderman Watts?
Yes.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I have one thing, it's not an action item tonight, but I'd like to give another update on the limestone building. The bids were let yesterday, and I just want to put it out there because I know Alder may get questions when they're out in the community. The, thank you. The bid was let by Terricon. The contract for the demolition will be with Terricon. The questions that people have regarding the bid should be addressed to Terricon. Terricon is overseeing this demolition, and they will have some assistance from the city as far as Mark Sering, our building inspector, on logistics things and what have you, and some of our city departments, when, when we need certain streets closed and when things like that will be done. But otherwise, this is a Terricon project. So, if you get questions on it by contractors, if they should have the bid packet in hand, if they don't, they can, they can contact the city clerk, it's on our website, under the bid section of our website, the entire bid package. But this contract is with Terricon, not the city of Rock Falls, and those are where the questions need to be addressed.
The bid packet, actually, you have to get from Terricon, but from our website.
You have a link to it from our website.
The invitation to bid is on our website along with a link to it.
Yes.
When do they expect the bids to come back?
February 1st is bid opening.
February 1st. I was looking for that in the.
With demolition to begin in February.
Thank you.
Are they going to do that here, then? Are they going to open the bid?
They are going to open it here because we feel a great deal of the contractors will be local, and it would be much more convenient than Eric and I or, and whoever else decides to be at bid opening to go to Naperville. They're going to come here.
Although you did ask if that could happen, yeah.
And then, just to let you know, we are expecting a visit February 4th. We have at least two of our, our friends, our grant managers from the U.S. EPA coming out to visit us again. They're very impressed with this project, and they're very impressed with everything that's already been done on the east side of the bridge. So, they're coming out again. It's our new project manager and her supervisor, and our old project manager, Craig Mankowski, is coming. He just can't stay away from us, even though he doesn't have us anymore. And then, we'll also be visited that same day here at the site visit by the Illinois EPA, our representative Steve Colentino, who many of you know. And Terricon will also be coming out that day, and this is a good thing. When you ask your U.S. EPA people to come out and do a site visit, and they email you back the next day and say, "We can be there February 4th," that's a good feeling. So, just wanted to let you all know that we'll be expecting that visit and staying in the EPA's good graces.
What is the finished look of the limestone site going to be?
Actually, if you have questions about that, I believe Mark can go into detail about that after we get the bids open. I would prefer to wait on the details of how it's going to be left until after the bids are open. Otherwise, you can talk to him in private. Because that's part of the bid package, and it's not what we, it's not what we put out, it's what Terricon put out, as far as what the finished product would be, and I think Mark has a good idea of what that will be. And so, I'm kind of speaking to something that's not for me to speak to, because they put out.
Well, plus, we do that, we would not want to conflict with the bid data.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to say.
We don't have any input on what that is, it's going to look like a?
Yes.
Rock wall or a?
Yes, Mark did have.
Dirt-filled berm or what?
We had input, and there's options.
Yeah. And some of it's going to depend, because when we were, when Terricon was first going out to demolition companies and getting quotes so we could know what we could expect to be in line with that, several of them gave us different options with the finished appearance. That varied anywhere from $15,000 higher to $60,000 higher, depending on what the finished look would be. So, that's why I really don't want to address it until after we actually see what the bids come in at with the proposals that were for how it will look.
There is a paper, there's a paper copy of the bids back in the clerk's office.
Good. You should feel like you're at home.
Anything else, Robin?
Um, no, Your Honor, I think that's all I have for this evening.
Information correspondence. Mr. Ardini, something under you this evening?
Yes. I'm up. I'm looking for approval of the recommendation from the Public Works Property Committee to award the cash farm lease for the sewer plant farmland to the highest bidder of Mike Galrap in the amount of 300 per acre from 3/1/2016 to 2/28/2017.
So moved. Second. Motion by Mr. Watts, seconded by Mr. Reitzel for the approval of the recommendation from the Public Works Public Property Committee to award the cash farm lease out of the sewer plant farmland to Mr. Mike Galrap in the amount of $300 per acre. Any additional comments?
Question.
Sir.
Section 3 on page 1 of the lease, I think it's just a, maybe a typo or something, it says the tenant agrees to furnish the property. That's something that should be, that shouldn't be in there. I mean, we as the city agree to furnish the property. Section 3, it says the tenant's investment and expenses, and it says tenant agrees to furnish the property, and that's basically the same thing we're saying up in the landlord's expenses. The landlord agrees to furnish. You're, you're not reading it correctly.
Okay.
The tenant agrees to furnish the property and pay the expenses listed below, is what it says. And then, it lists out the things that the tenant is to furnish, including all machinery, equipment, labor, fuel, et cetera. So, that's the property that the tenant is to furnish.
That's just saying that he's.
That's the way, that's the way the lease is worded. Above, it says in section 2, landlord agrees to furnish the property and pay the items and expenses listed below. The above described farm excluding improvements and real estate taxes on all the land and improvements.
Property is referring that to the land, the property.
It's just referring to the typo.
......
But, no, it's worded correctly.
Correctly, okay.
Motion's on the floor, it's been seconded. If there's no further questions, roll call.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman.
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler.
Yes.
Alderman Watts?
Yes.
Seven aye.
Anything else, sir?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Reeves, welcome back.
Thank you.
With this nice warm weather. Anything from you?
Not at this time, Your Honor, no.
Mr. Frickerstein, had the procedure done, is now with us today. Department heads, Mr. Cox, please.
I have a couple of things tonight, Your Honor. As you know, a new permit, we received a new permit to discharge August 1st, it wasn't high. Along with the parameters, the maximum parameters that were allowed discharge, there is, there is also special conditions within that permit that we have to, it explains paperwork or other things that we must apply to EPA over the term of the permit. There were two items in that permit, and I'd like to address them one at a time. One is, it would be for a professional service agreement with Stanley Consultants for a CMOM plan. A CMOM is basically a capacity management, operations management. It's basically capital improvement plan that we have to follow over X amount of years that we'd be submitted to EPA. That was one of the special conditions that was in our report, and that would be for a cost not to exceed of $110,000.
So. Mr. Reitz makes the motion for the approval, the first seconded by Mr. Snow, for the professional service agreement for the CMOM plan with Stanley Consultants.
I think it's important to add that the CMOM, when it comes out, that could go over a 20-year period. Just, just the initial CMOM could be a 20-year capital development plan or capital improvement plan as far as all the updating of the system and everything that needs to be done.
Any further questions? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman.
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler.
Yes.
Alderman Watts?
Yes.
Seven aye.
The second, it was also within our permit, and it will be for professional service agreement with Stanley Consultants also, and that would be for a nutrient reduction study not to exceed $57,000.
Motion by Mr. Reitzel. Second. Seconded by Mr. Watts. Mr. Cox, I think you've done a good job of explaining this, but both of these things are through no fault. These are things that because of the permits that we do get to operate that are now making requirements, especially this nutrient reduction. And can you just briefly, I know it's a big subject, but briefly touch on that so that people understand that when the EPA comes out with changes, that we don't have a choice, that we have to do whatever it takes, and our compliance, current compliance has nothing to do with any kind of a punishment or penalty.
No. Currently, our compliance has been 100% since we opened the plant. We currently have a phosphorus permit that says not to exceed an average of 1 per month. We are far below that every month. What this is, what this is, what's driving this is the federal EPA, the epoxy zone down in the Gulf. We are kind, we have a tiger on our back. We're a point source discharge, and they're trying everything possible to reduce the epoxy zone. They've already done studies to show that we can reduce it down to the point they're looking for on the study, and it will not make a difference. But they still want the study done. And what the study is doing is asking what it would require from our system and how feasible would it be to reduce it from our current limit of 1 to a limit of .05 or less on a constant basis. These are all unfunded mandates that come from the EPA. Most of these are being driven by the federal EPA that have passed down to the Illinois EPA that you must comply. We have no choice but to comply.
Mr. Kuhlmeier.
Do you have any idea how close we come to that?
We, we, oh, it's, this is a very low number they're asking people to hit, very low. We run about .5, which is very, very low, but they're asking it to decrease it by 10.[1676.73] So you're no longer talking, .5 is that you're talking .05, you're going down into the hundreds. It may cause, I'm not sure what will come out of here. It could be more chemical addition, it could be another physical process that has to be added. Nothing would change, this is actually, this permit runs for five years, so nothing would change in the next five. And if anything, they would have to give you X amount of time to comply if they do follow through with this. But, as of right now, this is just a study.
So is EPA recommending, making recommendations to you, to the rest of the wastewater treatment plants, are they making recommendations how to get there?
No. They're asking us to find out how, how, I'm sure they know how, but they're telling us to look at what we have and do an in-depth study to say, how would you get to this point? They're not telling us how to get there, they're telling, they're asking us to show them how we will reduce the phosphorus to this point.
So they don't really care how we get there?
As long as we get there.
And we could spend X amount of dollars on the side of, of a new process, or we could expend a little bit less, say, on, on, on a chemical process.
Yeah.
However you get there, they don't care.
They don't care, it would be-
How much we spend as long as-
What we decide to do if they enforce this, if they so choose in some year to say, now your permit will reduce to .05, no more, not to exceed .05, it would be at that point we would have to see what would be our best option, what would be the most cost effective.
I think the important thing is here is the compliance that we already have in place. People who are in the position, going to be in the position soon, that we were in five or six years ago, or actually probably longer than that, and started the process on our new plan, now these things will have to be incorporated into their design and into their future things, which is just going to, and then by the time that's done, new permit requirements will come out, but-
Every five, every five years, we get a new permit.
Yep. And that's their chance to, unless you have a major event, that's their chance to lay something new out there for you to, a challenge, as it were.
And they usually do.
Yeah, and they usually do. Okay, motions on the floor, it's been seconded. We've had a presentation, is there any further questions, Fred? I don't want to thank you very much for taking the time to break that stuff down. Harry Nutt, roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Cluckler?
Yes.
Alderman Watts?
Yes.
Seven aye?
Thank you, Ed. Mr. Simon?
Chief Nelson?
Thank you, ma'am. Gary?
Uh, good evening. My voice is still a little screwy, so here I am again. We all know the tragic events that we, the community went through this last week with the house fire on Second Avenue. In results to that, the Red Cross has a couple different programs where they, a target in neighborhood. So this Saturday, they're going to come to an area, probably First Avenue to Fifth Avenue, Fifth Street to Second, and they go door to door, put door hangers out, and I make copies, and I'll get them to all of you before we're done, so you see if your ward has one of these, or somebody asks you questions. One of them is the fire safety tips, the other one is a smoke detector program that if they contact the number back on the flyer, they will make an appointment and install smoke detectors in their residences. So, they're going to do that start Saturday. And then approximately in April, they're probably going to expand for the city, they're going to do it in waves. First, they like to go to a targeted neighborhood where an incident did occur. So, in April, they will break down and they'll have their additional manpower and they'll, hopefully, we're going to do the whole city with them.
At no cost to the residents.
Exactly. And it's all through the Chicago office of Red Cross. So I just wanted to make you aware that this is going to be taking place, and it's a, it'd be a good thing, they have some other programs that we may work in the future with that. And, and just so you're aware, we have the past several years participated in the state fire marshals, smoke detector program. And on an as need basis, we have constantly deal with that, you know, we get calls, and try to zero out the, the need for that, except right now, we're, our supply is out, and with the state of Illinois not having a budget, that also got shut down. So, we're just sitting in a holding pattern for our supply that we normally keep on a regular basis, so.
It's a wonderful opportunity, there's no cost to the residents, the Red Cross, this is excellent. And they provide the closed smoke detectors that have lithium batteries that are good for 10 years.
Yes.
You cannot take the battery out because you're tired of hearing it beep. So, it's, it's really a good opportunity for the residents.
Yep, just so you're aware, so that'll be this Saturday.
So, any other questions? That's what I got. Thank you, Gary. Thanks. Mr. Sering snuck out. I'm sure he went to work.
He's helping us.
He's helping you. Mr. Patel.
All right. About mid-December 2015, we opened up our Well 7 project contracts. We broke it down into two contracts, well number, or, excuse me, contract number one was for developing, drilling and developing the well. And contract number two was installing the pipe from the well site over to the well four, that's going to be decommissioned here when we get ready to start the project for well number seven. We had five contractors bid on the contract one, and three contractors bid on contract two. So what I'd like to do is request approval for Rodkey Well and Pump out of Fenton, Missouri, at 1,000, or $180,798.
For contract one?
For contract one.
Mr. Reitzel?
Second.
Second by Mr. Logan. This will be for the approval of contract one, the recommendation of the Public Works and Property Committee for well number seven project in the amount of $180,798. Questions?
Just a clarification of the, our payment on this?
Through the revolving, I EPA revolving law.
The low interest loan that we, we had, that we had approved a few months back.
Yes.
And this is when we actually solidify how much that loan will be for.
Any other questions? Harry Nutt, roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Cluckler?
Yes.
Alderman Watts?
Yes.
Seven aye?
And for the second contract, O'Brien Civil Works out of Polo, Illinois, for $219,356.
Mr. Reitzel?
Second.
Second by Mr. Watts. For contract number two on Well 7 Project, O'Brien Civil Works, Polo, Illinois, in the amount of $218,356. Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Cluckler?
Yes.
Alderman Watts?
Yes.
Seven aye?
Excuse me, the actual cost is $249,356.
$249.
Yeah, the wrong number was put on the, it's 249.
Sure, we can vote.
So sorry, you gotta do it over again.
What did you say?
The, the actual amount, the correct amount that that should be on contract two is $249,659.
Why, so is your tabulation sheet incorrect then, or what's the deal?
The tabulation sheet shows it at 249.
Mine says 219. The one that was in my packet says 219,356.
What's that say?
The one that's in this packet says 219.
Which?
Second to the last page.
Mine says 249.
Mine says 249, too.
What? For Rod-
249 is Martin and Company.
Yeah, 219 is correct.
That's the fourth, that's the fourth, third better.
This is contract number two, well number seven, 249,659.
No, if you go over to, go over to O'Brien.
Go over to O'Brien, drop down.
That's the one for Martin Excavators.
I don't have another one in mind.
Can I show you?
It says total, total bid proposal for contract for O'Brien Civil Works Incorporated, it's 219,356.
Good thing the Aldermen are on, on board here, aren't they? Yeah, there's another 40,000.
Ignore that.
Okay.
Request approval for 219,356.
You got all, you got all you're gonna get.
That's all I need.
Trying to get that vector truck in there.
I was for, yeah.
Got anything else?
Uh, just that we're going to be gearing up for the groundwater slash high school education for local and rural schools for 2016. What I usually do is I start calling in March to start making appointments for us to come out, do the training. We also have this high school scholarship, $1,000 scholarship, it's already to the high school, and one more in, in April. We will be the winner, so. Uh, some going on, and if this goes right with the EPA, we should start breaking ground plans first.
And the other thing on the, this is, we will have additional costs that will not be under the EPA loan, number one, the pump itself.
Yes.
Uh, we wanted the Byron Jackson pump, we were not allowed, per the EPA loan requirements, to specifically request that it be a Byron Jackson pump. And, um, something we've learned is if we want a certain piece of equipment, it's worth it to, uh, go out and pay for that piece of equipment ourselves. So there will be an additional-
Uh, not, approximately 98,000 for the motor pump and power plant as part of that third additional.
But it will not be included-
In that wrong.
-in the revolving loan.
Yes.
And it's best, it's in our best interest to get the best nets for this type of situation.
Sir, that's all I have? Thank you. Good night.
Well, as Bethany has mentioned, on June 25th, we're going to have Summer Splash, Big Cat Quest, and the River Chase. And as an update, Rockfall's Tourism is working both with the Chamber for Summer Splash and with Territix for the River Chase. We want to make sure that all events are represented, they're all equally important, and we feel this is a perfect blend of everything that's already going on in the community. Any questions?
More will come as things are finalized.
Lots more.
Lots more.
Lots more.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reitzel?
Welcome to Georgia, Matt.
Mr. Logan? Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Steve. No, thanks to everybody, there were a lot of cards and well wishes and visits and everything else, so that was, that was very good. The other thing that I'd like to say is, I'd like to commend the Fire Department, Sterling Fire Department, and the Twin City Fire Command for a very professional job in very difficult situation this last week. Being home and not doing well, I was wide awake and listened to the, to the whole thing, and was one of the most professionally handled incidents I've heard in a long time, so please give, give that to all the members of both departments. That's all I have.
Mr. Snow?
I'd just like to touch a little bit on the smoke detectors. Last night I was awakened by a mine going off three times. Um, if you've got an old one, I would recommend replacing them, because I found out last night, I mean, when it went off the first time, I, of course, woke right up, my dogs are going nuts, no smoke in the house, nothing going on, which is great. But, went back to sleep, took about an hour finally to fall back asleep. Lo and behold, fire alarm going off, smoke detector going off again, so, happened to me three times last night, so needless to say, I went out this morning and bought all new detectors. Mine was about 10 years old, changed my batteries, uh, yeah, the time changes. And, um, but, uh, I'm, I'm, it's fortunate that there wasn't a disaster at my home, but, you know, it was quite a surprise to wake up in the morning with that thing blasting, and it does wake you up, but, anybody that has any old ones, I would recommend that, you know, go out and change them if you, if you can, because they, they can become defective at a certain point. That's all I have, your honor.
Mr. Kuhlmeier?
Yes, uh, when there are tragedies such as what we just went through, it gives an opportunity for the entire community altogether. And, of course, we express our sorrow and, and regrets to all the people, not only that were injured and died, the families, but also thanks to all the people that participated in the, in, in the whole project.
Mr. Shuneman?
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Mr. Cluckler?
Yes, I have something, your honor. I guess since we did such a good job on the questions about the bell, uh, been brought on with another, uh, list of questions. Uh, it seems like we have some people who want to know what happened to the, either the welcome to Rockfall signs or displays that were at the bridge and at Route 30 and 40. Not, not that they disappeared just recently.
They're in storage at the street department. The, the one that was on, first came across the bridge, they left.
Right, right.
Yeah, it's, it's at the street department in storage. It actually needs a little work. I think the guys are planning on touching it up this spring, perhaps, and getting it out again. We're kind of waiting until we saw what, you know, what was going to go on down in front and front. But it is in storage, it's safe, it just needs some touching out, and it will help for it. It is there. Now, um, what was the other one that they-
30 and 40. I mean, originally started out as-
The waterfall?
It started originally as a waterfall, and then froze up, and-
It was, I asked about that because I had someone in the former administration ask about it. It was totally defective from what I understand, and it was going to cost $2,000 bucks to even get it to where it was in working condition, and it was not feasible to do that. It really was kind of a warm climate. I should have put in a warm climate, I would.
I guess it's one of those things that we should get going, you know, with our tourism attractions coming up, so, you know, that people come to town and, and they don't know whether they're in Sterling or Rockfalls, at least we can, we can let them know which side of the river they are on.
Look at the banners on the bridge, that'll tell you.
What's that?
Look at the banners on the bridge, that'll tell you where they are.
Anything else?
No, that was all.
That's why?
Uh, yes. Sorry, I'm just getting over something here. Everyone's aware, obviously, of, of what the past week has been for fire awareness and safety. Just as Mr. Snow has alluded to on the, uh, smoke detectors, uh, the fire departments do a fantastic job of reminding everyone about the smoke detectors twice a year with the time changes. Just would like to put that reminder out to everyone, to test yours, make sure that they are good, make sure that they are available. It's, it's this type of thing that happens that makes you reevaluate what's going on in your household, or at least mine, anyway. Have a plan, cover that plan with your children, have a backup plan. Just important things that, if anything should happen, God forbid, that your kids know what's going on, your family knows what's going on, and they know what to do. My household has just recently purchased the, the fire escape ladders and, and stuff there, and it, we ran drills on how to do that procedure and stuff there, because you just never know, so. I would ask all residents to please have a plan and a backup plan, revisit it with your families and your household. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I would be remiss, I didn't have much to say tonight, but I was going to talk about many of the same things that you guys have already addressed, so I'll just throw it out there. Without a doubt, a tragedy that no community or no family needs to ever want to deal with. To the Adams family and to the Hopkins family, both, you know, are sincere sympathies, and I, I think that, you know, we mentioned the fire department, but it's just as important to mention the police department, because they were there as well. And, uh, in, in situations like this, they have a dubious task before them to work with the fire department, to do the right things, to make sure that everything is accounted for, that there's an investigation that goes on, and to make sure that everything is done. So to Gary and the Fire Command, as was alluded, and Commander Nelson and your staff, a huge thank you. And, um, you know, I, I posted something on Facebook, I rarely do, but I posted something on Facebook because, as the mayor, and I'm sure that you as Alderman felt the same way, or at least I sure hope you did, you know, uh, all the years we've been here, there's always this back and forth between the two communities. But it is an ironic that when an event, unfortunately, of this magnitude takes place, the true community as a whole comes out. The outpouring of people in both communities, uh, yes, there were some young children involved that attended the high school and great Catholic grade schools here. that attended the high school and great Catholic grade schools here, but the Sterling and Rock Falls High School, wearing blue and taking pictures and sending emails and letters to the students at the Newman High School and to the St. Andrews Grade School, and the kids from Sterling High School, doing the exact same thing. And the number of people that came out of the woodwork to volunteer in the kitchen over there, donated money for the huge meal that was provided for everybody that attended the services, Newman High School for allowing what was the appropriate thing to do, having the visitation at their gymnasium, so that it could become a public experience. And to all the people that live in communities outside of the area, outside of our community that have donated money and everything else, it's just absolutely overwhelming. And then you see this story in the Gazette today of this young man from, I believe, Amboy, that they have a basketball game and there's a 50-50 prize, and it was decided that the money would go to the family. The 16-year-old kid, $250 would be a lot of money for him to do something with. Without hesitation, walks over and says, "Give it to the Adams and Hopkins family." Without hesitation. I think, unfortunately, too many times it takes events like this to bring out that goodness in people, but it also shows, when it does come out, just exactly what our communities are made of. And I think that that is very important. And then, you know, coupled with that, Mary Hopkins, who died in the event, her father, Ron, was a firefighter with the city of Sterling for a lot of years, her brother Paul is on our part-paid department over here and probably been for, I think we came out close together, I think he's got 25-plus years now. And the Sterling and Rock Falls Fire Departments, as well as the Rock Falls and Sterling Police Departments, and myself and Mayor Lee went over to the visitation and did a walk-through as a group. And that showing of caring and concern by the firefighters to the family and to the community members, I have had so many calls and comments from people that they know that that wasn't necessary, but they know how much it was appreciated by all the family members. And what they seem to forget at times is that for the policemen and firemen, that was an important thing, too, because of their direct involvement in the other side of the tragedy, the jobs they had to do that morning. So I think that our communities here are far more than, at times, we think they are, far more than people that live here think they are. And I just would like to say to anybody that's listening tonight, you know, you can be very proud to live in these two cities, and contrary to what the popular belief and sometimes the stories that run about are, we are a very strong community, and I think that was very much demonstrated by the events that have happened. And there's no reason that it can't be like that for so many things, and we don't need a tragedy event to happen, so. That's all I will say on that for this evening. Anybody else with anything for the good of the council? Hearing none, and in the absence of Mr. Folsom, I would defer to Mr. Wrightsle. Make a motion to adjourn.
I didn't hear him.
Mr. Watts, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.